This conference will now be recorded.
Five thirty-one will call the Seacole Board meeting to order. So, on your cell phones, answer the flagrant.
Flagrant. Through the flag of the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. If you have not signed in, please do so. Is anyone here for public comment? Cross the podium, please.
I am taking part in public comments at the request of the Wasica County Pioneer's publisher, Eli Letkin. You have crossover meetings this evening at the City Council. The board, and so he asked if I would speak up. Eli has put together some information regarding the newspaper. He wanted you to know that there are factors that would fairly be considered aside from simply which of the newspapers has submitted the lowest price. He wanted you to know that, for example, the Wasica County Pioneer currently has an in-county subscription of eight hundred and eighty-three, nearly nine hundred. And of course, recognizing that each newspaper is usually regarded as being read by at least two people, or up to nearly two thousand. The Wasica County News, on the other hand, has about three hundred and ninety-five in-county subscriptions, fewer than half. Also, if one wishes to subscribe to the Wasica County News, one pays eighty-three dollars a year, while the Pioneer charges only fifty-five dollars a year. And so it is more accessible to a wider array of readers. Eli points out that he has numerous employees, two full-time and quite an array of part-time people, and numerous volunteers and contributors who all are within the county and who are paid, who, if they are paid, are paid salaries within the county. And so they contribute to the economy locally. He wants you to know that between the Star Eagle and the Wasica County Pioneer, he anticipates spending roughly two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars in 2024, the only part of which, which will not be contributing to the Wasica area economy is what he spends on having the newspaper printed, because there is no in-county printer. He also wants you to, he at least wishes to claim that the Wasica County Pioneer works harder to help contribute to the atmosphere and the news and the community ship of the area residents. Finally, his closing paragraph, "I understand the need to pinch pennies. At a dollar per column inch," we are quite literally talking about the difference of a couple hundred dollars per year on these bids. "I am spending more money on the space necessary to print the legal notices than I did to change the, to charge the county. I did this solely because the Pioneer's requested." So, he asked if I would share that information with you. And please feel free to contact me or give any questions.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Public comment? Anyone else is here for public comment? We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Anything to add, Commissioner Crowsey? No, sir, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Christoffersen? No, sir, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walter?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Michael? No, sir. My Sam? That being said, I have a motion to approve the agenda. So, move. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Christoffersen, second by Commissioner Crowsey. There's no other discussion, all those are favor, aye? Those are both same side, motion carries. Three is approval of the county board minutes. Seacole Board of Commissioners' work session minutes, November twenty-first, 2023. Seacole Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes, November twenty-first, 2023. Seacole Board of Commissioners' work session minutes, December seventh, 2023.
I would move them as a slate, Chair.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Walter, second by Commissioner Christoffersen. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those are favor, aye? Those are both same side, that motion carries. Four is the consent agenda. Approval of the bills. IT transfer of funds. November twenty-twenty-three funds transfer report. Year-end check run and extension on demolition of original home Jessica Royer. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda. Who would move the consent agenda? We have a motion, is there a second?
I would second.
Motion by Commissioner Crowsey, second by Commissioner Walter. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, just clarification, if I could, for the board, that'll fix the spelling error on item four E. I don't know what demonization is, but I'll find out. So, I'm just gonna change it to demolition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All those are favor, aye? Those are both same side, that motion carries. Five is action items. Transfer of funds. Or transfer of fund?
Transfer of funds.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are here today to request our transfer one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from the general fund to the ditch fund forty-one to cover some deficit balances that have arrived before the end of the year. The ditch funds are not allowed to have a negative balance at the end of the year, and we are requesting to loan these four ditch funds money to bring their accounts back solvent.
These deficit balances are, I mean, this happens annually. You know, except some ditches have a deficit. But like, a ditch like these, you know, we've got plans in place to correct that.
Right. You know, the ditches that are in question, the reason for the deficits is that they were redetermination benefit proceedings that started in 2023, and the damages for the upper skirts on the right of way were paid to the owners in the year 2023, and we were not able to assess for those funds in that same calendar year. And so, next year, after the redetermin, now that redeterminations are done and the benefits are correct in the ditch systems, we'll be able to recuperate those borrowed funds.
The four percent annual is that passed through, passed along from the drainage authority to, or just from the drainage authority back to the ditch?
Now, the four percent interest rate is what?
We had said.
You had said, right, as a loan, an interest rate for the loan.
So, this is just fund to fund, there's?
It's fund to fund.
Yeah.
Ditch fund to ditch fund.
Okay.
So, I have a motion for that.
I would move the transfer.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Motion by Commissioner Christoffersen, second by Commissioner Crowsey. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those are favor, aye? Those are both same side, motion carries. Next is a repair and front recommendation tile inspection equipment.
Mr. Chair, it does look like a subpoint, for whatever reason, but it is actually a separate request for transfer of funds. Sorry.
See, that was two, too.
Yeah, if you want me to explain the next ask of transfer of funds is to do the opposite of those four ditch, the ditch fund forty-one to repay the general fund for twenty-five individual loans that were given. Some of them we are paying back in full, some of them are partial payments. And those payments that are going back to the general fund from ditch fund were derived or came through previous assessments. So, we're trying to pay back some investment.
So, is that going to be under A then? Is there going to be A one of two reasons for it to be A period?
We could, as to both of the requests under the same subpoint, Mr. Chair, the board was okay with that. We just have to make sure the individuals that motion for the first item were comfortable with this one.
Well, we can do both, but it won't be separate.
Separate action, I think. Emmy would appreciate a separate action.
Okay. Okay. Can we get a motion for that? So, is there a second? Second. Motion by Commissioner Walter, second by Commissioner Christoffersen. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those are favor, aye? Those are both same side, that motion carries. Now, we're onto the repair and front recommendation.
We are requesting to utilize riparian funds to lease purchase a green tile inspection camera, inspection equipment for the public drainage system. The reason that it is coming, the suggestion is that it's coming from the riparian fund is that we have approximately under forty miles of green tile, which at some point outlet into public water courses. And the concept behind it is that we would like to inspect that tile so that we can prevent nutrient-rich sediment loss into the tile system, which ultimately will end up in the public water course at some point in time. We have the task of inspecting our drainage systems and inspecting tile without televising it is a tall task. So, we in the past have tried to contract that out with mixed results, trying to coordinate contractors, along with opportunities in the weather in the short window of opportunity without there being a crop in the field. And so, we are requesting the purchase of this equipment, and we are going to operate it with staff that we have in-house.
Can we get a motion on the board?
I would move it. Is there a second?
There is.
We have a motion by Commissioner Crowsey, a second by Commissioner Walter. Is there discussion? What was the motion? We're gonna buy it or lease it?
Lease it.
It is a lease it, and it would be entered into the lease purchase agreement.
Okay, that's what you're proposing here in the summary, the six payments?
Yes, it'd be over the course of five years, six annual payments. And it is a little less than twenty thousand annually, but it was, we don't have the paperwork signed, so we don't have the dollar-for-dollar value. Twenty-eight thousand dollars annually will cover the lease payment.
Well, sorry. I skepticism, or I understand the need here, because there hasn't been one very available to you. And it's made it very difficult, I think, I get that. My biggest concern is, is I'm glad that we're going to lease versus purchase, because I'm just wondering, you're gonna hit it pretty hard these first three years, and I know you've got a lot of tile on the back of your mind that need looking at. My concern would be is after we get a lot of these inspected, is there still gonna be the need? And that, you know, time will tell. But I'm just wondering if four years from now, is it gonna be utilized to its full worth, you know?
Sure. You know, in terms of that, I would be surprised if we get through one-hundred-and-forty miles of county tile in four years to begin with. With that being said, you know, it is also a resource available to us where, when there, when problems arise in the public drainage system and someone has a concern that tile is not working. Right now, the approach is go out and start digging. You know, you go and start digging up the tile at the bottom and just keep following up the system until you find the problem. And sometimes you spend a lot of time exploring. The hope is, is that if you have this available, this resource available to us, that it can be taken out and when the problem is reported, that we can settle them for the tile and drive it up toward the obstruction or the blockages, and that we'll know where to dig, rather than endlessly digging across the field to get to that point. So, you know, and so it's, it is there, you know, as a resource to better serve, you know, the beneficiaries of the system as needed. And, you know, the next thing is, is that once you inspect this tile one time, you know, that is not the end of it for another fifty years. You know, there's going to be portions of tile that we inspect, and some has cracks in it that have not begun to deflect yet, that we go back in two years and we look at it again, you know, because we're trying to monitor the condition of the failure or the stage of the failure. Or in a circumstance like today, we're using a camera to monitor treatments in the system, and we will go back next year and see if we were successful in the removal and if they have grown back, and we have to repeat the process again. So, it's, you know, I understand your concern that it's not a, an item that we will buy, use heavy on the front end and then put on the shelf and walk away from it. But I do believe that, that tool will be a big part of modern resources in ditch inspection for many years to come.
What was the price point of outright purchase versus those?
A little over one-hundred-and-forty thousand, about one-hundred-and-forty thousand, change. They missed some opportunities when we first had quoted it. There was a portion of it that was used equipment that we would have been able to purchase, but, you know, we weren't able to act upon it. And so, you know, that piece of it was sold. So, now we're buying all-new equipment rather than some new, some used.
One-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand is the lease payment if you go to Walter. Right. Yeah, twenty-eight, ten, six. Twenty-two, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand.
That's an interest, if you do a five-year lease purchase, that's six-point-nine-nine percent. So, there'll be six payments is up there, figuring your interest in. Probably a lot of them come out of the, you know, six payments in the five-year lease. And the good news is, is that that equipment is in high demand, and, you know, we were assured by the lender that if we want to get up, that they could sell it for us very easily. And, you know, I know that that seems like a sales pitch, but on the other hand, when I ask them if they have any used equipment that we can buy right now, they have nothing to sell us.
Well, that's kind of where I'm going with that. Do you think we're going to be in it for three years or less?
Do you want to, to purchase and sell? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, see, right, right. Felt like if, after three years, you decided it wasn't working out or you weren't using it the way you thought, then we're obligated to find that. Or a sale, or a lease, you just let it go.
Well, this, you know, to be clear, this is a lease purchase. And so, you know, once we enter into that, we, we'll.
Part of the rationale for the lease float, if you will, is because the intent was for this to be a non-levy transaction. So, use of the riparian funds obviously has no budget pressure. It doesn't give the levy at all, it's not general fund dollars. It's, it's state funds that are recurring, and we bought down a larger portion of those funds over the last fiscal year. And it would be pretty easy to flow to the twenty-eight thousand dollars per year over that time cycle of lease, without it being any kind of budgetary pressure or levy pressure. So, that was the point, is that this wasn't a levy conversation of purchasing anyway. It's utilizing those state dollars for the intended purpose that was provided by that program. That obviously doesn't speak to the timeline or the effectiveness. It's just more rationale for why the lease made some sense.
I want to talk to you some about this, but you would, you would charge us back to the ditches as used, you know, when you use it on a ditch system, then there'd be some charge to that ditch system.
The idea, and coming along with our one-on-three-E drainage policy that should be provided this winter, you know, that our intent is to have some sort of a fee schedule one-up for, you know, not so much the purchase of it, but the ongoing maintenance and repairs of the equipment itself, you know, along with that camera. You know, we also have the excavator that is approved for us this year, and we are trying to come up with a matrix of how, you know, the individual ditch systems will contribute towards at least, you know, the maintenance and repair of that equipment. And so, you know, thus, the use of this riparian fund was to, to cover the lease to, to purchase the equipment. And, you know, that is not to say that there should not be some investment from the ditch systems into maintaining it. But at this point in time, we don't have a fee schedule to put before you. So, we'd like to, to kind of integrate that with the drainage policy this winter.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you, thanks. Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-fifty-six is transfer of debt service funds to holding account.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I can walk through this one. As part of the overall budgetary structure of the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year, as you're aware, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of that is denoted in the twenty-twenty-two-year planning calendar going into twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, excuse me, was set aside for ongoing GL conversations and projects as a placeholder for the financing that will be recurring in the upcoming years. And we're getting close to the end of twenty-twenty-three and have not sold any particular debt. So, statutorily, we need to come back to you by resolution and request that these dollars be set aside in a holding account as well, too, as we are not using it for debt service yet. We still anticipate that to be the case, of course. But this is just a nuance of statute, given that the original budget levy, which obviously you're looking at tonight as well, too, but in that same context in twenty-twenty-two was by resolution twenty-two-dash-fifty-two authorizing part of that debt service for a specific purpose. We need to come back with resolution requesting that the transfer of funds, as you see, from those two accounts in the recommendation occur by year end in order to forget those dollars for what will ultimately be debt service in the future. But will not happen in this calendar year.
Thank you, Mike. All right. So, we'd look for a motion for resolution twenty-two-three-dash. So, moved, and is there a second? Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Walter, second by Commissioner Christoffersen. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those are favor, aye? Those are both same side, that motion carries. Next is establishing the twenty-twenty-four county share of annual salary.
So, I bring you resolution twenty-two-three-fifty-two. You will read for your statement. This is to establish the twenty-twenty-four county share of salary. So, as part of the annual budget process, each year, the Labor Committee meets with elected official and reviews comparable market data and kind of discusses some recommendations to bring to you. So, you'll see before you, there is a resolution and a recommended salary for twenty-twenty-four. Set that to one-twenty-seven.
What's good, a motion?
I would move that resolution twenty-two-three-dash-fifty-two.
Is there a second? There is. Motion by Commissioner Christoffersen, second by Commissioner Crowsey. Looking for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye? Those opposed, same side, that motion carries.
The next resolution is resolution twenty-two-three-dash-five-three. That's establishing the twenty-twenty-four county attorney salary. Same process as applied. We met with the Labor Committee, or she, Rachel met with the Labor Committee a few months ago, reviewed a bunch of the market data, and we have bringing the salary one-thirty-eight-eight-seventy-five to you for twenty-twenty-four.
Looking for a motion for the county attorney annual salary. Is there also, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Christoffersen, second by Commissioner Walter. Looking for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye? Those opposed, same side, that motion carries.
The next resolution I bring to you is twenty-two-three-fifty-four. And this is establishing a salary and premiums for county commissioners. Talking with the Labor Committee, they have recommended to not, to zero percent increase for twenty-twenty-four, keeping everything the same as twenty-three.
Looking for a motion.
So, moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? There is. Motion by Commissioner Walter, second by Commissioner Crowsey. Any discussion?
Just, Chair, briefly. I don't have any, any issue with this. But I do, I know that we, we need to keep our eye on this, because when we're done serving, this has to be high enough so that people can afford to do this job and spend the time on it. And we have to keep that in mind, that we made an adjustment in recent years, which was much needed to kind of put us on par with, with surrounding counties. But I would urge us, and I know that our HR will help us do this. We, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get to the point where nobody's willing to do this job, because their time is so valuable doing other things that they can't afford to do it. So, that's my own comment.
And we, we used a similar matrix as the sheriff and the jury.
Yes.
As far as which counties we were, we were comparing to. And that's why we stayed at zero. I think we're, we're very competitive with like counties.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So I know the concern because you want to attract quality people, if you want to call us that.
Well, here we are.
But no, and I understand that, but I think we're in a good place.
I know that this was, this was headed through the same process, and I appreciate that the homework was done.
Yeah, I'm good. I guess I agree with Dee. We need to keep a watch on it because all of us have jobs. And we're trying to do a balancing act on both ends and put all our time, as much as we can, into the final work as well as getting our own businesses taken care of. So yeah, I'll be fine with it another year.
We do have a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
All right. For the final resolution, it's resolution 2023-55. This is establishing the 2024 wage increases for non-union employees. So this, the adjustments near the current contracts for 2024, it would be a 2% adjustment within their salary on the first full paper in July. And that would be the only increase for 2024. There's the other action in there would be movement of the salary grades by 2%. So that min and max for 2024.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion? So this would be all in one motion?
Correct.
That's all in that resolution?
All my questions.
Move resolution 2023-55.
My motion is our second. And there is. Motion by Commissioner Kristofferson, second by Commissioner Crowsey. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Next is a public hearing to consider a residential tax abatement for Ethan Thompson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll walk through this one. A couple of these to bring before the board this evening. Very similar to several that you've seen in the past. Nothing particularly unique about these requests other than that they have gone through the full culmination of the city's vetting process. And we are proposing to partner again with the city of Wasika in their residential tax abatement program for newly instructed homes. Part of that requirement for the tax abaintments is to hold a public hearing to see if there's any public comment from those in attendance regarding this particular action that the board would partake in. So the specifics you can see that are included in your packet. I can certainly read through those if you'd like, but I assume you've had a chance to see them already. So apart from that, Mr. Chair, I would simply ask that the board move into a public hearing before consideration of adoption of resolution number 2023-47, substantially the form provided for enacting this residential tax abatement.
Thank you, Michael. Board will move into a public hearing. We'll hold a public hearing at 6:04. Is anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second. Motion and a second. We will close the public. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries at 6:05.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Then coupled with that, I would look for the board's approval, if so willing, to authorize resolution number 2023-47.
I would move it.
Is there a second?
There is.
There's no other discussion, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Can I move on to the next one, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Same song and dance, different name. Lucas and Chelsea Camp City, as you see in your packet, of course, but literally the same action that was just requested of the county board a moment ago. So again, I would turn it back to you if you're still willing to enter a public hearing to gain any public comment on this particular approval before looking at resolution 2023-49.
Thank you, Michael. We'll open the public hearing at 6:06. Is anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Looking for a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. And a second? Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Close at 6:06.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then at the board's wishes, I would proper resolution 2023-49 with you.
I would move to approve resolution 2023-49.
Is there a second? There is. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to administration. Administrative update.
Unless there are particular questions on the, Mr. Chair, I think I'll defer to the budget presentation.
All right. Thank you. Human resources announcements?
Same. Unless there's some questions. I have provided updated announcement for you. Continues to be activity recorded.
Anyone have other questions?
Yes, no particular questions, just thanks for our HR department. I know that we are running you hard these days. It was challenging to keep us staffed with quality staff that want to serve the mission of Wasika County. And we appreciate the work that you're doing to do that. Keep on keeping on. Thank you.
Thank you. Do Commissioner reports? Commissioner Walter, you want to begin?
Sure. Let's see. We last met. We last met on the 7th. And after we met on the 7th, I went over to the Center for Truth and Taxation for the Library Board. Also finished up in the last two weeks, the Leadership Academy that I was working on through NICO. Had a chance to spend some time celebrating the holidays with staff. 8th. Met with a citizen on the morning of December 11th. Did truth taxation, the second meeting for our Library Board, since we have dual counties involved in that, and then Library Board meeting on the 11th. On the 12th, joined you all for two public listening sessions concerning Jail Justice Center and attended a ditch subcommittee and a virtual 21st Century Joint Leadership Team Public Health Meeting. 13th, met with Chris Tintin to talk about veterans' issues. Did a NACOS Healthy County meeting. And another NACO meeting on the 14th. Had a Min Prairie Policy Committee meeting and SWCD. And on the 15th, finished that course, took the last class. That was awesome. Six, or on the 18th, yesterday, met with a number of people to begin talking about how to use the opioid funding that counties are getting and what kind of model we want to use. Then a Shack member development meeting, then a Shack leadership and MDH staff meeting, and then the 21st Century Joint Leadership Team meeting in cities. Today, Ms. Min Prairie, if you'd like to come in here?
Thank you, Commissioner Walter. Commissioner Kristofferson.
All right. Seven, those are our last meeting. On Friday, the 8th, was a county holiday party that I did not attend. Got down here, but okay, yes, have you done? Yeah, no, I did not. You guys went to one and be there. 11th, I met with Michael in his office to talk over a few items. On the 12th, was our listening sessions, morning and evening. 13th was Highway Subcommittee. And we met with the Labor also after that. Yeah. What I was going to say, we did meet with Steve, or a surveyor from Elbert Lee or Freeborn County to start talking about monumenting the county possible funding to apply for. So that was good. And then after that was Labor Committee. 18th, I was with Commissioner Walter with the opioid funding on where to go with that. And then in the afternoon, I had HRC over in Oatana with Commissioner Crowsey. And then today was, yeah, Min Prairie Joint Hours Board, just ahead of this meeting tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Kristoff. Commissioner Crowsey?
You know, Thursday, Thursday the 7th, we met with the sheriff in the morning. And then work session and a board meeting. Friday the 8th was the holiday party. And I had my notes. It was nice setting out at the golf course. Mainly because the older you get, the harder it is to hear. And I could actually hear and talk to everybody. So this was nice. And then that moves it up to the 12th for the public listening session. In between, Commissioner Walter and I met with Mr. Howard on a few ditch issues. Then on the 18th was the HRC. That brings us to today. Thank you, Commissioner Crowsey.
Thursday the 7th, 7:00 AM, we met with the sheriff. 8:00 AM was work session. 9:30 was board. Holiday party on the 8th. On Monday, the 11th, I met with the sheriff, 7:00 AM in his office. Bank Society Meeting slash Fair Board, 7:00 PM on the 11th. Wednesday, the 13th, we had a public works meeting and then 10:00 AM labor. On Thursday, the 14th, I was at the City Council Chambers for the 8th Avenue Reconstruction Northeast with Jim, right out. And that brings us to today. So there's nothing else to come before the board?
I would look for a motion. So moved. And is there a second? Second. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned from the regular board meeting. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, welcome, everyone. For the Waseca County Board of Commissioners Budget Hearing Presentation, please silence yourselves and stand for the budget leader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Waseca County Budget Hearing Presentation. I'm Board Chair Brian Hargith for 2023. We also have our full board in attendance this evening, as well as various department heads and staff from the organization. If you are attending the meeting and specifically have a question regarding your market value, please note that individual valuation questions are not part of this presentation and can be addressed by visiting staff from the assessor's office located in the License Bureau there where you've entered the building. Additionally, if there are questions regarding information that is not covered this evening, staff present here this evening, including myself, would be happy to take questions after the presentation or set up phone conversation or a meeting as a follow-up. If you have a question about your value or classification that they needed to be addressed at the local Board of Appeal and Equalization Meetings in April, those values were on the valuation notices sent out in March of 2023. The time for challenging them has passed, which you can call the assessor's office at 507-835-0640. To discuss any issues with your value or classification, they cannot be changed for the 2024 payable year, the assessor staff can only work on values going forward. Thank you. Now we will have the presentation of the 2024 final budget and levy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair and the individuals that took some time to join us this evening. What we're doing here, purpose of the meeting, as was just articulated, giving some individuals opportunity to speak towards the budget setting process and levy setting process if they have specific concerns or questions. As the chair just mentioned, this isn't an individual look at a specific property. This is looking at the other side of the equation, essentially where the budget and levy enter into that conversation. From a statutory standpoint, we are required to hold a meeting as a local government body and jurisdiction, giving individuals a chance to speak and also have some requirements of when the board must certify a levy, as you can see on the screen there on or before, five working days after December twenty fifth. So we are looking to accomplish that this particular evening as well. If you look at your tax statement and then maybe you've received a proposed notice in the last few weeks, you'll notice that there are several levy authorities that appear on that statement itself. And we are only focused on the highlighted authority in this particular instance, Waseca County. We don't have any specific jurisdictional authority over what the city or township or school districts or any special taxing districts do to set their levy and what those specific thresholds are. We are only in control and the board is only making determinations on the Waseca County portion of those specific tax statements this evening. So again, looking at the statutory requirements, September thirtieth is when the preliminary levy is required to be approved. That was done on September nineteenth at the regular board meeting, and it was at a one and a half percent increase over and above the 2023 certified levy. Subsequent to that, additional budget conversations took place in the remaining months that led up to this particular date, with a recommendation coming back to the board as follows. This was the preliminary budget, and it has not changed in the interim period. But the preliminary budget is thirty-nine point five six million, as requested, and the preliminary levy itself, as just stated a moment ago, still recommended at the one point five percent that the board will, I'm sure, entertain discussion on in a few moments. The tax capacity, which was a large change in this year as compared to previous years, this is the valuation piece of it. Tax capacity is a derivative of estimated market value or taxable market value. It's just a smaller condensed number of what we would see as taxable market value on our property tax statements. But there was a substantial shift or increase in tax capacity value from 2023 to 2024. So when we just look at as simple as we can, how do we arrive at a preliminary tax rate that is applying universally to every single parcel the same within the county? It is really just a matter of the numerator in that equation being the levy, denominator what's dividing into it being the tax capacity. And the resultant rate, as you see, of forty-five point six seven three is what is then applied on that county line on your tax statement, exactly the same to every single parcel across the county, regardless of classification, size, et cetera. If we look back over the last few years and just peek at what that trend has done, you can see we've been on a progressive downward trend over the last few years, which is, of course, where we would like to be plateauing in 2021 amidst those COVID years and have been decreasing since this that point in time as well. So administration is requesting that the board commissioner set a final operating levy of a one and a half percent increase. The budget anticipated for the fiscal year, as I mentioned, is thirty-nine and a half million dollars. I know this is a little small. I should have clarified this beforehand, I apologize. I do have some PowerPoints that looks like some of you have probably knows already on the back table there as well, which is all of the same information. It's some of the data is a little smaller. If you'd like to follow along, certainly grab one of those or take one with you as you go out later at least. But this is just a quick snapshot summary that I continuously updating throughout the budget preparation year leading up to preliminary and then tweaking again from preliminary to final. But this just looks at a more detailed analysis of the major fund categories. And then the departments within those funds, the general fund being the largest, and then looking at what the comparison is from 2023 to 2024. What movement is there, what the increase or decreases that are at the department level and at times even the program level outside of specific departments. So if we, again, could look at some of the levy and budget history going back several years, we're capturing that last four years, especially pretty static minimal changes from a levy standpoint, which is encouraging from my standpoint to see increases in budget, but sustainable or even decreasing growth in levy, meaning we're able to deliver more services for ultimately less tax dollars, levy dollars. So the board has just been doing a good job in the last several years of keeping that levy at a low predictable rate. Two percent or lower for the last several years is much, much better than a lot of our closest friends in neighboring counties as well, jurisdictions, you know, cities. But we'll look at some specifics in a moment, starting with what various break points are for 2024. So when we talk about a one and a half percent increase, what does that mean? What does it mean in terms of total levy dollars? What does it mean in dollars increased, actual dollar increases over 2023? So a zero percent, of course, would mean that the 2023 operating levy is seventeen point seven four million dollars, which it is. So one and a half percent increase on top of that moves us down to that eighteen million line for a total of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in increase. And I'd like to take a moment at the property level to look at what does that really mean again to the individual again. Powerpoints are back there, some of this data is a little small. But I have a variety of examples based upon the board's request ranging from zero percent to one and a half percent at half percent intervals. So we'll look at some scenarios of zero percent levy increase. What does that do to the parcel? What does it do to your individual property? And then, of course, these may not be your exact market values, but it looks at a varied range of median and average market values across the county for a residential homestead, for example, a residential non-homestead, a commercial preferred or a smaller business, a slightly larger business, and then a per acre price as well. What does the impact of a one and a half percent in this example mean? And on the right-hand side is what that levy matrix would look like, meaning that's the major fund categories that I was discussing a moment ago, consolidated at their major program areas. Looking at the budgeted expenditures, the non-levy revenues, and then furthest on the right would be that net tax levy. So what the shortfall, so to speak, said another way, in funding would be based on budgeted expenditures versus anticipated revenues coming in in those various areas. So at the one and a half percent recommendation for a median valued home at two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, let's say I own a home in the city of Waseca, the city of Richland, Janesville. It does not matter where the municipality is located in terms of how the county grade applies. I would expect to see a decrease of seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents to the county portion of those taxes. Same concept, I don't have to read through all of the examples, of course, and you can certainly see those. On a per acre basis, there is, this is where the largest adjustment happened between 2023 and 2024. As you can see, the median tillable acre at seven thousand and twenty dollars in 2023, jumping to ten thousand, seven hundred dollars in 2024. At the same one and a half percent increase, that is an increase of four dollars and forty-four cents. This is, this next example here is no levy, a static levy or a zero percent increase. And looking at those same relative examples, an eighty-nine dollar and three cent decrease of that median valued residential homestead, four dollars and seven cents increase on a per acre basis for tillable. As I go through these, you see that same levy matrix over on the right-hand side. And the only thing that is changing as we go throughout is that building line itself. So if I go back here, you see a building amount of five ninety-eight feet seventy-two. See if I can find a little highlighter or something on there. I can circle it, maybe it looks like. I don't know, right there. And as I go to the subsequent pages, this would be a zero percent increase. That, that two sixty-six that we looked at in that breakpoint earlier, a one and a half percent increase is two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars over and above 2023. And two sixty-six essentially comes right out of that building. On the building fund, highest art capital improvement projects is a county. So essentially that is saying that there are certain projects we would choose not to fund if the board had a desire, in 2024 at least, if the board had a desire to pursue a lower levy threshold rather than the preliminary one and a half percent. Further example, the half a percent, same concept, but you see that amount incoming, four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. You see the decrease there applied at the residential homestead level and the fact that the per acre level as well, several other examples as well. Last example again is at that one percent. And then we'll repeat everything I just said, following the same concept going forward. This page summarizes essentially everything we're just looking at, at all of the various break points and thresholds at the levy. So zero to five percent in this example, which is something I provide to the board every single year. They've never requested anything outside of this array to date. So this just simply says, all right, if you make a decision at any one of these breakpoints between zero and five percent, here's what the impact is at the individual property level at these market values. And of course, that is an estimate based upon where you, as an individual property owner, would fall. So we try to give a wide range of how that may apply to your particular property. Certainly something you could peruse more in detail in the handouts that you could take with you or a public comment, of course. So looking at preliminary data for 2024, Waseca County had the third lowest preliminary percentage increase in their levy in the state of Minnesota, only two lower, Clearwater County, which is in that northeast central split by two Indian reservations of Minnesota. And then Assante County also had a zero percent increase to, I think, have four new commissioners. If I remember correctly.
At least three.
At least three. But they were pretty adamant that they were staying static this year until they knew what was happening and the new commissioners were comfortable with the programs and service deliveries. So the average median increase for all eighty-seven counties, six point seven percent. Median increase for in the middle of all those eighty-seven counties, five and a half percent. So you can see that a one and a half percent estimated or preliminary is well below the state average and median anticipated for 2024. This data comes right off the Department of Revenue's website. All counties and jurisdictions have to certify the Department of Revenue what the preliminary numbers are that are included in the September pages. This just comes right off of their website. So it's helpful sometimes to see what's happening around us. And when we compare this data to our surrounding counties and look at in context of 2024 preliminary levies, this is what we conclude in that Waseca, of course, is several percentage points below the next closest county, which is Freeborn, and topping out with Fairville County that had a more significant preliminary levy increase than anticipated, or which would be normal in previous years of almost twenty-five percent. But that blue data is what the preliminary levy is in real dollars. That red line is showing what the percentage changes in those respective counties as we look at our surrounding neighbors. Similarly, something that is helpful for the board to look at at times is comparison to similar populations and often do this on a salary basis. So it is helpful then to look at several counties that are relative to us in population and size, what's happening there. And as you can see, even counties of comparable size are, Waseca County, even in the preliminary that was certified, preliminary certified in September is well below on a percentage point basis in that preliminary levy increase itself. I think that's what I have, Mr. Chair, happy to clarify anything you just saw or go back and answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any question on the board?
Okay, that per acre basis, that four dollars increase, I'm assuming that that is homesteaded anyways?
Yes, I believe it was.
Okay. It must be.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So the difference being homesteaded would be a half a percent tax capacity versus anything above that tier one limitation of one percent. So the example, my corner go, the example down here is based upon a homestead extension, or Link Valley Group two A homestead.
Right.
Good question.
Does anyone here have a public comment? If you are, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Public comment?
Do you think we need to let those people in there know that it's public hearing right now? Cause they're talking.
There are people in there.
Is there?
Yes, at least I see at least three.
Yeah, let us know that is, we'll be able to come at time.
No one?
No one need, no one for public comment? One more time for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? So that was three for public comment. We're going to move on to approval of the 2024 Waseca County Budget and Levy.
So, Mr. Chair, I do have various versions of Resolution 2023-57 that we're considering consideration. Should the board wish to approve something other than the one and a half percent prepared for that reality and possibility? So just to clarify that the actual number before you in terms of setting the preliminary budget, it's 2023-57.
Open for discussion. Want me to go first? Sure.
Preliminary levy was set at one and a half percent. We usually set our preliminary, obviously needs to be a worst-case scenario because it cannot go up in preliminary. I would say that we're better than worst-case scenario come today, looking at the budget and what we've brought forward. My question is, I know that if we were to go down with preliminary, you took that out of building fund. But that also could come out of general fund, correct? That doesn't necessarily have to come out of that account. I mean, you were showing it that way, but.
Please, Mr. Chair, thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Chris Stotterson. We don't have a specific place identified in the general fund itself where you to tell me to leave the general, or the building fund as stated and find a place out of the general fund to cut. I would probably simply suggest of looking at the retention itself in terms of employees and what their retention schedule would be and book against that. Or I would try to lean against the anticipated interest earnings. Not gonna look at Tanyo on the next day. The anticipated interest earnings for 2024 is, I think, we anticipate them exceeding expectations. We certainly ratcheted those up from 2023. Even 2023 surpassed expectation there. Despite increasing it a couple hundred thousand dollars in 2024, I wouldn't lose much sleep aiming at that account just yet.
You still feel like you're conservative in that budget scheme of interest in?
Yeah. Not having the proverbial crystal ball and seeing where the market's gonna go, it seems as though whenever it does go in that direction, it's not going to affect anything we have in our short-term investments for 2024.
So even if it was out of that, Commissioner Chris Stotterson, you're looking at the building fund under one five of five ninety-eight eight seventy-two. And if you go to one, it's five ten one fifty-two, it's eighty-eight eight, some change.
Right, and down to zero, down to zero, it's still three hundred and some thousand.
Two sixty-six. One sixty-two six and two zero.
Was your number? Yeah, two sixty-six would be taken out of that.
Exactly, yeah. And we've had several conversations on that. And specifically from the perspective of, okay, if the board ends up funding with a zero percent, what does that mean for the project outlet for 2024? And we'll be fine. And if there's things that come up in an emergency situation, those are always gonna come back to you anyway. And that's likely a different conversation than if the boiler blew up. We weren't necessarily budgeting for the boiler to blow up, it just did. So we're just having that separate conversation. And the reason I say that for the assuredness as well, too, is because of the additional interest earnings has been communicated to you in previous meetings as well in 2023 that wasn't anticipated. We were able to expedite several, what would have been 2024 projects from the capital improvement plan up into the end of 2023 very aggressively. from the capital improvement plan up into the end of 2023 aggressively. To the sugar and maybe of the facility staff, but regardless, they've been able to fit quite a bit in in the last couple of months.
Well, speaking of the building fund, as we took public comment about a possible building project, the public feedback we've gotten so far would indicate that there is some appetite by, by residents to, to do some building. I, we know that every $10 million bond of debt takes $750,000 a year in payments for 20 years. I, I would be concerned that we not be able to proactive on that. I know that we're positioned well, for really well for some of that, but depending on where we go.
Thank you.
While he's thinking, I have one. I would say, on one hand, I would say this would be a lot easier if we hadn't had that big shift in our, in property taxes from residential to, to, to farmland to some degree. When you see that biggest swing, you know that, that it really, it really made a difference. And that's not something we can do anything about. That's the math in the state property tax system that helps make that happen. But the difference between for, for anybody between zero and one and a half is relatively small. Really relatively small. So I'm glad, I am really glad that we're dialed in this tight. And also that your staff has done such a great job of making sure that they're, they're bringing in money from outside the levy to help things happen in Waseka County. Because that stimulates our economy as well.
Yeah, it, I know when you put it on a per parcel basis, yeah, it's relatively small, but that can get me in trouble too.
Absolutely.
With those, that kind of looking at it, I think you still, the tax rate and comparison counties, now we, we've seen, we've identified under budgeting, under budget in '23. It's going to carry over. We brought back some reserves from Vin Prairie that's benefiting us since the preliminary was adopted. I just don't, I still think we need to take some of those at underspending and reserve money as, as some levy relief. I, I personally think we could be at zero and be just fine.
I do agree with Commissioner Walter on the egg. And Commissioner Christopherson on the reserves that have come back from from Vin Prairie, using them over a series of years. Now everybody's listening to me.
Now maybe like three.
Was that me just talking or what? Can anybody hear me now? Oh, you can hear me now, just speak up. So, yeah, with the reserves that we will be coming back from Vin Prairie and looking at the egg, then using those dollars, knowing that we have those dollars over the next few years, I would have no issues of, I think, a half a percent would be good, would be satisfactory to me. Having those dollars available and looking at the egg sector. It does decrease at right around 37 cents, I do believe, right around in that area, 35, 33 per acre. You know, when you figure that out over acres, it is, it is part of a break, so.
And that's homesteaded, so you double that.
Correct. And I just, that was where I always felt it was, you know, a good feeling where we were returning some of those dollars back to the overall public and also helping on the egg sector, that's far as the one percent. To 1.5, going down 12%, down to 1.5. So that was my feeling on it.
I would, I would move that we go to a half percent tax levy increase from 2023. Are you putting that on motion? That is in motion. We have a motion for a half percent levy in 2024.
And second by Commissioner Crossy. We have a second by Commissioner Crossy. Now we're going to open it up for discussion. Anyone have anything to say? Or have you said it?
Let me do just a little math.
Yep, I, I want to obviously resolve what Commissioner Walter said, that the staff works on this budget. Like it doesn't just happen in August and it's figured out. So it's year round, they work on it. We like to keep it low, but we like to stay away from peaks and valleys also. And that's, you know, we, like you stated, we don't have a crystal ball to know what happens next year. It, it would be nice to say, hey, we, we know what a three or five year outcome is, and we don't know that. So that's why we rely on staff. And Michael does an excellent job himself in keeping staff on task and providing the numbers that we need. I've said my piece, and we guys can weigh in on it.
Well, I did the math. And coming from the egg sector, I'm just going to say the shift is, is hard on our, on our egg community. The difference between, for non-homestead acres, the difference between a point and a half and half a point is going to be 400 and, 480 dollars on a thousand acres. Obviously, it would go down a little bit more, seven, it would go down to 700. It would be a $700 difference on, from zero to 1.5 on a thousand dollars, non-homestead. In, in the big scheme of things, for most operators, that, that isn't a, a big difference. And at the same time, I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the gesture that this is a good thing to do and we want to be very fiscally responsible. And I can, I can be convinced, we've got great staff, a wonderful administrator that, that makes sure that we can do what we need to do within our budget.
I guess everybody knows that there's people up here with farmland. But I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily looking at this percent off because of egg land. I think we can do it because we can do it. Because we've got, we've got budget surpluses from this year and it's the right thing to do. I know that, you know, half percent doesn't mean anything with the shift we've seen today. So I don't want people to think that I, that I'm doing it for that reason. I'm doing it because I think we can fiscally do it and be, be okay budget wise going into next year. And I realize we don't have a crystal ball. But we were worried about this year when we set our levy last year. And here we are. And now we just went through a state legislative session in '23 that brought more money down to the county. So they helped us out. I think we got to not fear tomorrow. It's always kind of by my saying, and do what we can today. We do have a motion on the second for a half a percent levy increase on resolution 2023-57. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign? So thank you, everyone, for this. Works up to this and I think it was a great outcome. Thanks for your comments. There's nothing else to come before the board. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion on the second. No other discussion, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 7:06 PM.